Our Communities of Northwest Stokes is a local development initiative with a nonprofit foundation, both of which are community-driven, all volunteer and nonpartisan. Our Communities of Northwest Stokes Foundation is the nonprofit entity charged with financial accountability for contributions, expenditures, and balances in support of our communities. This forum for candidates is hosted by the foundation as were similar forums in 2018 and 2020. It does not endorse or support any specific candidate or political party. All candidates for the Stokes County Board of Commissioners and for Stokes County Sheriff were invited with format protocols and flyer attached to addresses provided by the Election Board in the beginning of April. A follow-up invitation with the format protocols and the candid questions was provided to all candidates two weeks prior to the forum. A growing interest in the forum appeared widespread in Stokes County. We recognized three important concerns: building capacity, some residual concerns about COVID, and concerns by those who wanted to attend but could not attend for a variety of reasons. To address those concerns, this video was added to provide widespread access convenient to viewer schedules. Copyrighted 2022 by Our Communities of Northwest Stokes Foundation. All rights reserved. This video may not be copied or modified or altered in any way without the express permission of Our Communities of Northwest Stokes Foundation. A special thanks to Roy Sawyers for responding to a last-minute request as we sought to contract a professional videographer with specific experience in producing this video for the foundation.
Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome you to the Stokes County Candidates Forum. My name is Paul Blue. I'll be serving as your moderator today, and we've got several folks that we want you to meet, so we won't spend a lot of time. We'll get right to that. There are a few things I want to go over first, just so that we're all on the same page. The...this is being hosted by Our Communities of Northwest Stokes, so it's a great organization, does a lot of things for this area. If you're not part of that and want to be, we can get you on the email list and we can... Well, my time's up. Okay. Better move on, huh? Okay. But if you are interested in knowing more about Our Communities, raise your hand, Paula. Paula will be back there at the refreshments. Hit her up, and she will put you on the list, and you'll get emails about what's going on and all that, so we'd like to have you come be part of that. The event today is being recorded, as you can see from the cameras around, and it will be on YouTube later on. On Our Communities Northwest Stokes Facebook webpage, we'll have a link to that. Once it's up and ready, you'll be able to go and watch that. Those that are not able to be here today will be able to see that, and I'm sure it's going to be something you'll want to see over and over and over, right? So if you could do that, show it to all your friends and all that, so we're glad to have that opportunity, but we wanted to be able to make this available to those that couldn't be here today as well. We've done this the last two election cycles, and so we're glad to be able to do it again for this one. The first one we did, we talked some about the former school property over here, and everybody here is very interested in the election, or you wouldn't be here to meet the candidates. Most of you, I'm pretty sure, are probably also interested in the community in general, and the former school property is a big part of that. Mr. Mark Black owns that property. He's going to come give us a brief update on what's going on over there, so you guys can know what's happening over there, because we figured that this would be a good time to give you such an update. Thanks, Mark.
Good afternoon, Mark Black. Again, I was approached...I ain't going to go through the whole story, but as I was approached by Jimmy Kellam, actually, is the one who kicked it off and tried to talk me into...start talking me into buying the school, and then I made a mistake of meeting Horace and staying up here at the school. And then, you know, Jimmy Walker and Ernest Langford got together, and we thought about putting something together for the community. I do want to clear up a few rumors and Facebook posts that says, "I got it for nothing," and said that "I'm gonna make a killing." Well, I promise you, there's a lot of things open on the school right now. You know, we're talking to buyer, potential buyer, where, you know, and I've got it priced at what it is, because I actually believe we can get somebody, possibly get somebody in here to really help the community. I constantly am talking to people around the community. I think Maggie Watson will be the first to start making some use of it in some organic food delivery. You guys might want to reach out to her if you're interested in that, but she's having a truck come in there and deliver, I think, once a month, I guess. Drew Bowman is always talking and trying to see what he can do with it. I'm open to anything. I've got to sign up there for sale. I'd love to see somebody really come and make a go of it. I think it's a huge success for Francisco and Northwest Stokes. What you have now is you have a very good building with new roof, new AC heating units, and no asbestos. You know, I don't know if anybody's priced getting asbestos out of that much school before, but it ain't cheap. So for the Facebook post who says, "I'm gonna make a killing," I think he's sadly mistaken. But anyway, we'll keep that going for the community, and again, I've talked to, you know, Horace always has ideas for it, and we'll keep looking at those. Like I said, I'm open for anything there that'll benefit Northwest Stokes, mainly because that's where I live. And maybe we can get the commissioners to pay attention to Northwest Stokes at some point in time. Sorry. I'm sorry.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Okay, speaking of commissioners, let's get going with these guys and with our sheriff candidates. So what's going to take place over the next few weeks is we have eight candidates running for the Board of Commissioners. We have three incumbents that are running for reelection: Rick Morris, Andy Nickelston, and Wayne Barney Castle. All three are incumbents and, like I say, running for reelection. We have two of them that are participating today. Andy and Rick are with us today to participate. And then we have five other folks that are challenging, and so we're going to hear from three of those. Three of those, yeah. Mr. Brad Chandler, Jake Oakley, and Keith Wood are all participating with us today, and we appreciate all of them coming, and they will be running for three seats. So they are all Republicans in the Republican primary, which is May 17th. The top three vote-getters will move to the general election unopposed, so those will be your commissioners. That will be decided on May 17th. So if you can vote in the Republican primary on May 17th, I urge you to do that, and after today's meeting, I'm sure you'll have your ideas of which three candidates you can vote for. You can vote for one, two, or three of the eight candidates, and the top three vote-getters will be your commissioners for the next go-round. Sheriff, there's two candidates. They also are both Republicans, so there'll be no opposition in the general. Again, it'll be decided on May 17th between Justin Tuttle and Joey Lemmons. Joey's the current sheriff, and Mr. Tuttle is the challenger, okay? So we have two candidates there, and we have five of the eight commissioner candidates that are with us today. All right. That makes some sense. So here's how we're going to do it. We're going to have an opening time. They're all going to get a couple of minutes just to introduce themselves to you, say whatever they want about themselves, and then we're going to have three questions for the commissioners, three questions for the sheriffs, that they will have three minutes to respond to, and then they'll all get an opportunity to do a closing, say whatever they want to you on that. All right? That's what we're going to do. These are prepared questions. It's not a debate. It's a forum to get acquainted with them, so they've seen the questions, they know what we want them to talk about. We've solicited information from the community at large as to what's interesting to you, what you want to know. From that, we formulated the questions that we're going to be giving them today. After that, we're going to have a time of some refreshments and just interaction with them, so if there's anything specific you want to address with any of the candidates, you'll have an opportunity to do that, to talk with them, ask them questions, whatever you want to do, so they'll be hanging around and having some refreshments with you after that. And the best part, the absolute best part of the day, is those refreshments were prepared by Sylvia Burton and Southern...Southern classics. So you will not want to miss that. So even if you don't want to talk to any candidates, you're going to want to get some of Sylvia's stuff back there. Act like you're talking to somebody, okay? You just act like you're interested, but you won't want to miss out on Sylvia's Southern classics back there. Okay. What am I forgetting? Let's see. Oh, got some rules. This is important. This is important, so I'm going to read, mostly read these to you, because these were provided to all the candidates. They apply to the people participating in the forum, but they also apply to you. You know, the purpose of this is for us to get you acquainted with the candidates and candidates acquainted with what you're interested in and what your concerns are. We've already heard Mark's concerns, so they'll want to hear from the rest of you as well. But not while they're talking, okay? So no reactions, positive or negative. Don't clap for anybody, don't boo for anybody, don't do that. It'll just take up time, and it'll be counterproductive, okay? So just don't respond. At the end, if you want to clap for them, you can do that, but don't respond for any specific comment or question whether you agree or disagree. You can put that on Facebook later. So don't do that. I'm going to ask the candidates to address the audience, not each other. Again, it's not a debate. We're not going to challenge one another, say, call each other bad names and all that. Just speak to the audience and give your responses, and if anybody, you know, just be respectful of one another, everybody, candidates and people, just be respectful. We want to hear each other, and if you can't do that, well, you'll be asked to leave, and then you'll be told to leave. All right. So we've drawn numbers as to the order. We're going to start with Mr. Chandler. We'll answer the first, and I've already forgotten. I think Joey starts down here. Yeah, number one, right? Okay, so he'll start for the sheriffs. So let's see. I'll read the questions, and I'll repeat the pertinent part of the question for them, and they'll be timed. Did I say that? They will have three minutes to give their question, response to their question, and I'll give them a signal when they're getting close to that. Okay. Anybody, any questions? Anybody? Yes.
See, a copy of the question.
Well, we can give you...you can't have mine, because then I couldn't ask.
I got a copy of mine.
Okay. But we can give you one, I just can't have mine. All right. Any questions from the candidates? There you go. He's got a copy of them right there. All right, then let's get moving. All right. What we're going to do first, like I said, is we're going to just do an introduction, and we're going to go down the line, let everybody introduce themselves, and to save time and energy, we're just going to let them pass the microphone back and forth, okay? So we're not going to get up and stand at the podium and all that. We're just going to hand it down the line, and we'll do it that way, okay? Start with Mr. Brad Chandler.
Good afternoon. My name is Brad Chandler, and I'm running for a seat on the Board of Commissioners. My wife Tracy and I purchased property in Stokes County in 2006. We fell in love with the rolling hills, old tobacco barns, and the mountain views. Every weekend we could get off, we traveled to our property and began the journey of making it our retirement home. I retired from the Fayetteville, North Carolina Police Department in 2015. I retired as Assistant Chief of Police. I commanded the Administrative Bureau, which entailed all support, logistics, and training for the police department. One of my responsibilities was to build and administer the police department budget, which is larger than the total budget of Stokes County. I'm proud to be a graduate of the 198 session of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. I'm also a graduate of the UNC School of Governments Municipal and County Officers Course in Chapel Hill. I have a son who lives in Fayetteville, North Carolina, and a daughter who lives in Tampa, Florida. I have three granddaughters. Tracy and I love horses, whether it's trail riding or watching them graze in the pasture at home. I've never considered to run for a political office until I realized that our Board of Commissioners and county manager had no strategic plan to facilitate the numerous challenges that are here today, much less two years from now. The time for changing the current course in Stokes County is now. Thank you.
I'm Andy Nickelston. I'm currently one of your sitting commissioners. I am seeking reelection. I'm a fifth generation here in Stokes County. Worked for my parents. Both own businesses here, along with my brother. We own and operate those, and we've had as much as seventy-some employees. I'm well-invested here, looking to retire here, hopefully soon. Don't want to work till I'm dead there, but with five kids, my son has currently just bought a home here in Danbury, so we definitely got our roots planted here, and the reason why I ran last time was the future for our kids. The one thing that I've seen right here was Giles was leaving. Unfortunately, in the past four years, we've seen a huge change of now health want in every single window and every single facility you see around here. Not much what the...not sure what the county commissioners can do for that, but the one thing we can do is continue preparing for our future. We have a bypass going around northern part of Forsyth. A lot of those people that you see, and you see it done over and over the years, you'll see them come out our way where it's a little bit more quiet and get out of the city life, and they've got their expressway to work. So my one deal right here is to make sure our county is economically ready for this, to have the infrastructure in place, to have these businesses ready for the future population that will become the Stokes County. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jake Oakley. I am a candidate for county commissioner here. I'm a lifelong resident of Stokes County, fourth, fifth generation. I would have to ask some of my kinfolks exactly how many generations it would be, but I'm...
Six.
Six generations, okay. And so we've been here for a while, and I'm the son of Jones and Ruby Oakley of Walnut Cove, a graduate from South Stokes, married for forty years to my loving wife Alma with two sons, Eric and Ethan Oakley. I've been employed for Stokes County for over thirty-five years, starting out in the mapping and addressing department, going through the tax office, winding up my career as county manager. And I am a member of Rosebud Christian Church, and I believe that Jesus Christ is my Savior and Lord of all. I would love to have your support. Thank you for having me, and good luck to everyone here.
I would like to start by thanking everyone in the audience for coming out today. I would also like to thank Our Communities of Northwest Stokes for hosting this forum. Takes a lot of work to put on an event like this and a lot of coordination. My name is Rick Morris, and I'm serving my first term as Stokes County Commissioner. I've lived in Stokes County for nineteen years. Came to Stokes after serving twenty-six years on active duty in the Army, where I retired as a colonel. I worked later for the National Security Agency and as a business development consultant in the Washington, DC area. During my time in Stokes County, I also served nine years as a Stokes County manager before I was elected as a county commissioner. I am a lifelong Republican, pro-life conservative, and I believe in honest and efficient government that serves the needs of the people. As a county commissioner, I have a solid and consistent voting record that I stand behind. You can easily contrast my voting positions with those of current commissioners who are And the previous county manager is also a candidate for commissioner. My major objectives for a second term are to replace the hospital in Danbury with a new one, plus a 24/7 emergency room addition in the city of King, to complete the broadband internet expansion to the unserved folks in the county, to address the drug and overdose problem in Stokes County, and to hopefully lower property taxes during the 2026 revaluation. I am married to Kathleen Morris and have one daughter, Jessica, who resides with her family in San Francisco, California. I play golf in the banjo, ride motorcycles, and enjoy all types of motorsports.
Good afternoon. I'm Keith Wood. I'm running for county, Stokes County Commissioner. I've lived in Stokes County for seventy years. Yeah, I'm the old part up here. My parents are Maxine Wood and the late Louis Wood. I'm married to Tawana Angel Wood for soon-to-be forty years, coming up in October. We have four kids, eight grandkids. I'm a lifetime Republican since I was eighteen, lifetime NRA member, deacon at Danbury Baptist Church. I also have served on the Stokes County Planning Board since 2018. North Stokes graduate, class of 1969, and if you don't recognize me, I'm probably twice the weight I was back then. I received a degree from Forsyth Tech in Architectural Technology in 1972. Before I graduated, I was hired by a steel company. I'm currently still working with a Fortune 500 steel company, and I've been in the reinforcing steel business for fifty years. My roles with this company have given me many skills in working and managing people with respect, helping to put together sales budgets for over sixty million in the Carolinas forecasting and meeting that forecast, meeting deadlines on million-dollar quotes and projects. I also bring to the table fifty years working with engineers, subcontractors, and general contractors. I have attended and watched all the commissioner meetings for the last eighteen months. All this experience will be a major plus for being your commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner candidates. We're going to hear from the two sheriff candidates now. Mr. Lemmons chose number one, so we're going to let him go first.
Thank you so much. My name is Joey Lemmons. I currently serve as your sheriff, have been for the past year and a couple months now. I'm from, right here in Stokes County, graduated South Stokes High School, went on to the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. I'm currently in my twelfth year with the sheriff's office, previously serving as the chief deputy for Sheriff Mike Marshall before my appointment as sheriff. I think it's really important when you're getting to know a candidate to know a little bit about them and their belief system, and I want you to know, first and foremost, I'm a Christian. I don't run away from that. My faith defines me. It tells me how to treat people. When people call 911 and they call the sheriff's office, a lot of times, it's one of the worst days of their life, and so it's important that we treat people the right way. Number two, I'm a proud constitutional conservative. When I took the oath of office, I put my left hand on the Bible, I raised my right hand to God, and I promised to protect you, including your Second Amendment. I will never back away from you having the right to protect yourself and protect your families. And third, I believe in common sense solutions, no matter what, whether it be law enforcement or any other business or whatever type of occupation you're in, a lot of times, I think a lot of things can be solved just by good old-fashioned common sense, like we learned right here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Tuttle. I'm fifty-three years old. I've lived here in Stokes County all of my life. I'm the son of Gary and Jeanette Tuttle. My father here, he's here with me tonight. I got a daughter named Kristen. She's here next to the front row with me this afternoon. I'm the fifth generation here in Stokes County myself. My daughter's the sixth. I'm a graduate of South Stokes High School in 1987. I went on to DLET at Forsyth Tech, completed that, and I started with the sheriff's office in 1990, and I served sixteen years and nine months there until I decided to run for clerk of court, and I've come to hold that position as your clerk of court here in Stokes County. I feel that over thirty-two years of experience in my life serving citizens of Stokes County would make me a valuable asset to you as your sheriff in Stokes County, and I would ask for your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, candidates. And just for the record, I'm first generation Stokes County, okay?
Just four.
Well, I got here as quick as I could. All right. All right. The first question is one I've heard from about everybody that I've talked to about what questions to ask, so we're going to start off by talking about hospital and healthcare in Stokes County. Okay, commissioners, and this will again start with Mr. Chandler for the first question. Location and extent of healthcare is a paramount concern to the citizens throughout the county. Specifically, the county's Danbury facility is of interest to the residents. The current Board of Commissioners established a Hospital Operations Committee Board to advise on long-term and short-term county hospital operations. This past year, without consultation or input from that committee, the commissioners voted four to one not to renew the Life Bright operations lease at this facility with no presented plan to transition these services beyond the term of the lease. The commissioners later voted to renew the Life Bright lease while established in a transition plan. The Hospital Operations Committee Board has since held eight town hall meetings describing their proposed plan to rebuild the Danbury facility and have a 24-hour emergency room in both Danbury and King. These meetings have been soliciting community input and feedback on the plan and what services the people see as needs in the areas. So commissioners, your question is, what is your position on the committee's recommendation of rebuilding the Danbury facility with Danbury and King 24-hour emergency rooms, and what assurances do the people of Stokes County have that if you are elected or reelected, you will be, you will use the input from the committee and citizens' input to guide this in future healthcare decisions? Long question, but I think everybody knows what we're talking about.
Thank you. I fully support the committee's recommendation, which is to build a new critical access hospital in Danbury. This also includes the nursing home and the primary care family practice. The hospital will also continue to operate the medical facilities in Pine Hall and in King. King would also have a new 24/7 emergency room built with observation beds. The process needs to start now with the goal of obtaining United States Department of Agriculture loan, which could be paid off by the private hospital operator. I support the $10 million in the state budget for a hospital to be built in the county, be used in Danbury and King, and for the 24/7 emergency room. The lack of healthcare in the northern part of the county will put more stress on the Health Department for services and on our emergency services personnel and equipment, and this will also hamper economic development in the northern part of the county. Thank you.
So with this, the board currently does have something in place, the feasibility study done. This is going to tell us a lot here for the future. With the current predicament that the provider, and I want to stress on this, the provider, Life Bright has themselves in, we don't know what the future holds on that. Trial starts next month. The thing is, I'm not willing to gamble with our citizens. We have jobs at stake. We've got citizens at stake on this, and this is something that we've been trying to move fast on to have something in place. So with moving forward, I'm wanting to talk to providers who don't have any kind of negligence on them, who is willing to come here and help out Stokes County, and with some that's been out there, there are some that's looking to help us. If they're willing to build a full-blown hospital in King, I support that. If they're building it on their own, but also with it have medical care available for the northern end. It's too far of a drive, especially for myself. I live in Lost Bull, right on the line. It's too far of a drive to go all the way down south if you have a dire emergency. The good thing is, what these, what your current Board of Commissioners has put together over the last few years, if anybody could pay attention, reach out to Brandon Gentry and find out what your ambulance is now having service. We have put so many advancements towards this. We now have a retained staff that are fully trained. We've even got people from Air Care that's working for Stokes County MMS now. They can do so much in the back of that ambulance that the same thing a critical hospital can do. They're actually carrying blood. There's not many counties here around us that's even doing it in ambulance. So our main thing is, from the way we was trying to get all this taken care of, instead of being a training ground for our do. They're actually carrying blood. There's not many counties here around us that's even doing it in ambulance. So our main thing is, from the way we was trying to get all this taken care of, instead of being a training ground for our EMS, we've got that fixed. You've now got very qualified personnel in those ambulances in case you do have to go to somewhere far off like Baptist or so in the trauma center. But as far as this hospital, I want to continue talking to the professionals, the ones that's in it. If we can get the county out of the healthcare business, that's what I'm for. I don't want the taxpayers carrying this burden that if something happened and a facility or a provider goes out of business, it has fallen back on the taxpayers to take care of this. We can't afford it. Thank you.
Okay, folks, with the meetings that the town halls have had concerning healthcare, I am in support of that. I am, would actually utilize their information in seeking out better hospital care for folks in Stokes County. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that everything they've come up with is the best solution idea that needs to be done, but they have worked throughout the county with folks and got ideas that if you didn't utilize them, it'd be something wrong with you. So I would utilize their information. All citizens in Stokes County deserve adequate, good healthcare. That's just all, that's all it is about it. This is why I'm focused on making, there are three areas in the county if I'm elected. The first area would be in King. They would have their own hospital and emergency room, hopefully provided by one of the larger healthcare providers, Adrian Health Novartis. And with that, the second one would be, would be in Danbury or wherever. This study that the current commissioning boards have started in a, determine what is the best possible site, what is the best possible type of hospital, and what type of rooms and emergency room and everything that's needed in it. Three or four years ago, the commissioners passed a, asked the board to have a feasibility study done on all of our buildings, and Danbury was the first one done because we know the present need on it. In this, the architect come back and said, we probably need to remodel the elderly care section, which is the two-story section, and then you would build half the size that is needed in, that you currently have. This would be approximately 30,000 square feet. This would be an emergency room and with 10 or 15 beds of what we might carry if needed. The site in Pine Hall is a site that we can utilize in helping people in the Pine Hall area to where they'll have somewhere to go. It wouldn't be an emergency unit, but it would be carried to where they could stabilize somebody to get to these locations as needed. But with this, I am for Stokes County getting out of the hospital business. We can't afford it. And we also, I want the larger providers to be a part of this and try to help us have adequate healthcare in our county with all citizens on board everywhere knowing what's going on. Thank you.
My position on the hospital operation committee's recommendation is that I support it 100%. The committee provides a broad and unbiased perspective from across the county with their recommendation. They also bring a broad range of medical and business expertise, but most importantly, their recommendation reflects the feedback received from several hundred citizens across the county who attended the eight town hall meetings on the hospital. Hospital operations committee position on the hospital in Danbury is that it should be replaced with a new critical access hospital. My position would also include the requirement that the new hospital would have to qualify for financing from the United States Department of Agriculture, where the loan could be paid off by private hospital operators and not by the raising the taxes or sales tax or property tax on local taxpayers. The new hospital would continue to operate its hospital-based medical facilities in Pine Hall and the city of King, and King would get a new building on the old J.R. Jones property to provide 24/7 emergency room, including observation beds, so patients could be admitted. I would like to see the $10 million that was included in the state budget applied to the construction of these two facilities. By the time the new hospital emergency room facilities are constructed, the final option on the current hospital operator lease would be up for renewal, and the county could exercise the final option to explore hospital operator landscape for new hospital operators who might be interested in leasing the hospital. If a private operator should decide to build a new hospital in the city of King, I would also support that venture if it did not interfere with the existence of the hospital in Danbury. In the situation, in this, that situation, I would like to see two hospitals partner with each other to ensure no duplication of services and the best overall services for the patients. I just made one additional comment. If I lease a building to a bakery, that doesn't put me in the bakery business. If I lease a building to a medical facility to operate medical facilities, that doesn't put me in the hospital business.
I'm for a new hospital in Danbury and a 24/7 emergency room in King. I feel so strongly about healthcare in our county. I attended all eight town hall meetings so I could witness the citizens' input firsthand. My family and I have used the hospital service for all my life, and I'm currently a patient there. The whole county needs first-class healthcare. 2021 population estimate for Stokes County Fire District shows King areas, including Pinnacle and Saratoga with 22,096 people. The balance of the county is 23,731. Add visitors to Hanging Rock in 2021 of 90,102, and Dan River attracting visitors every weekend, plus the EMS travel time to the nearest hospital is my reason for my position on this. King needs and will support 24/7 emergency room. We cannot play politics with the people of Stokes County on their healthcare. This issue can be life or death. It is unbelievable what I have witnessed the last 18 months on this issue. It's not that, it's not the Stokes County that I know and love. A handful of people that do not use or know our current healthcare should listen to the citizens and the operations committee board.
All right. Thank you, candidates. We're going to now go to the sheriffs. We're not going to ask you what you think of the hospital. But we are going to ask you this. The citizens of Northwest Stokes rely on the sheriff's department for response to multiple emergency and non-emergency needs. Response time can be critical to the outcome of the situation. So the question to you guys is, what is your position on the current response time of the sheriff's department to Northwest Stokes County area? And would you implement any change or enhancements to the current response process? Start, Mr. Lemmons.
Thank you very much. I'll start off by saying, so when I started with the sheriff's office, when I was a patrol deputy, my first assignment was actually right here, we call this Area 4. And it's a large area. And I didn't, I wasn't from up here, I didn't know the people. And so I started eating breakfast at Johnstown Cafe. I started going to Ricky Rogers to get my hair cut and still do what's left of it. I'd go down to Albany Lotus Beasley and get a Coca-Cola. I don't know if y'all remember, but they had the coldest drink machine at their garage down here in Collinstown. And so I tried to immerse myself in the community to get to know the folks. And one thing that we did find even then with this area, there's a lot of winding roads. And sometimes that can attribute to a response time taking a little bit longer to get from a call from one end to the other. And so that's something that we've tried to work on in the sheriff's office. I've taken all of my unmarked vehicles except for those who belong to detectives and the administration, and we've added full equipment with radios, lights, sheriff decals. We've implemented those with some of our school resource officers, our civil division, so that they can also respond to an emergency. And that's something I think that's important and that has helped. In addition to that, we'll, in this upcoming budget that I've been working on, we're asking, I'm going to be looking for additional personnel to make sure that we can answer that call as quickly as possible. Like I mentioned in my introduction, when people call 911, a lot of times, it's the worst day of their life. And so we want to make sure that we are able to do that. I promise you that as long as I'm your sheriff, Northwest Stokes County is not forgotten, and I'll always be here for you.
As far as my response to the 24/7 coverage in this county and everything, to me, it's completely unacceptable because there's times where your area up here, Area 4, that he called it, is not giving 24-hour, 24/7 coverage. There's nearly 456 square miles in this county, there's six areas in this county. You've got five areas in Stokes, in the county of Stokes, and six, when being a county one code, when they shut down the police department, they got four deputies working down there, one per shift. And sometimes there's four working the other five areas of the county, sometimes there's five, but it's not 24/7 up here. That's something that needs to change. You deserve it. You're a citizen just like anybody else in Pine Hall, King, one code. I think the areas need to be looked at and maybe remapped out to reduce the size of them. Some of the deputies are looking at driving 80 square miles in the area, between 75 and 80 square miles. So that just takes down and cuts down your response time. So if you put, lower the areas, you're probably going to have tired new deputies. If he's got that in his budget, he'll solve my problem. But the one thing that I will say, as, if I'm elected as your sheriff and everything, I will see that that happens, and I look forward to doing that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, candidates. Okay, we're going to go back to the commissioners with a second question, and Mr. Nicholson will start this one. This one deals with economic development in northern Stokes. The face of business has greatly changed over the past couple of years. The challenges of maintaining an adequate labor force, supply chain complexities, and infrastructure needs such as high-speed internet have all been amplified for existing small businesses and business startups. While these challenges are present in more populated areas of the county, the rural areas have been hit hard by these barriers to business growth. The citizens of rural Northwest Stokes are interested in knowing your plans to adapt to these new business challenges, more specifically, how you plan to work with us in these challenging times to develop opportunities within our area to facilitate the creation of tax revenues and provide needed services. We are interested in how the county can aid rather than hinder business growth within our area. While we're asking specific to our area, similar issues and challenges face all rural Stokes, and each may have special concerns. So your question is, please describe the commissioner's role and your plan of action in attracting and incentivizing new businesses and enhancing existing small businesses within the rural areas of Northwest Stokes County to create a mix of businesses that generate opportunities, jobs, self-employment, and that meet the citizens' needs. Mr. Nicholson.
So having a business, I say before, having a business on this side of the county, it's very difficult to grow, takes many different factors. And right now, the biggest problem is, like I said before, there's a help wanted sign in every window. Hard to compete against the government when they're handing out free checks. So moving forward, and this was something that was wanting to go first time running, it seemed like COVID killed a lot of this stuff. It's got to start at our schools, getting these young minds, getting their classes back where they can do their welding and everything else and learn these little trades. That's what's going to help bring different stuff to this area, because then you'll be able to retain these youngins from leaving this county and going off somewhere else and staying here and starting a business, growing a business, or working for somebody else. As far as the internet, this has been one of the most frustrating things is being on the board, because the problem of it is, it's such a high price tag on it right now. Has been since day one, still does. Matter of fact, it's probably gone up 10 times now. So as seen recently, the RFPs for the internet went out. We did choose a provider. One of the recommendations that I set on that, as we were seeing the prices back in was, you know what? When I do my work, I don't get paid until my work's done. I think it's going to be the same thing with internet. If we've got a provider that's saying they're going to do this, they pay as they go. Once they get an area complete where people can hook up, yeah, then you can get paid for that. So that's all the way you're going to be able to finish internets. It didn't seem to get done before. That was before my time on the board. Why wasn't that completed? Where's the questions at on that? And the thing is, we can't get none. So moving forward, we've got to hold the people responsible that's saying what they're going to do about providing the internet, especially in this end of the county, to hold their feet to the fire on it. As I said also before, this road going around the northern Forsyth County, it's going to bring some industry our way. Over the last three and a half years, working with our economic director, Will Carter, the man has done a lot to bring in what he could here. One time, we got compared with a woman out in Rockingham County who was able to bring some in. Well, here's the thing, they were calling here saying, where's your vacant buildings? That's what we're looking for. Unfortunately, Stokes County don't have any of those. Rockingham County have plenty, so they were able to secure those businesses. So moving forward, with the ones that we have got coming here, and which, by the way, we have a gentleman who's interested in manufacturing guns and putting a place in Lawsonville. Why? He likes where it's quiet. He's coming, he's wanting to come out of Pennsylvania. My deal with him was, you let me know what you need to help you, I'll help you. Mr. Stewart recently purchased the, the. Bill Hanks over here, the sawmill. He has invested money back into that, slowly starting back off. So my idea would be, try to come up, can I finish my thing real quick, Simon? Try to come up with a tax break solution to help people on this end right here that's investing money to get them jump-started. And some people say, was that mean that you're not going to make them pay taxes? No, absolutely not. They've got to have a certain percentage set aside. So in other words, what we pretty much gave them was a year of tax break, you're going to gain double that second year. Thank you.
I've thought about this the whole week, once I got these questions here, of what we can actually do for the people in the northwestern section of this county. And the first thing I come up with in my mind is, guys, we need to be honest with each other. What is it, can we do? How far do you have to go to get gas up here? 25, 30 minutes? Is it the same on food? Same on food? Okay, if we got a gas station in this, in this area up here, do you think they're going to bring the gas here to us? Do you think the population in there is big enough to handle this? That's one reason, used to, yep. If it, if it does, you've got to, you've got to have the turnover rate in a manner to where it makes it worth their while to bring it to you. So somehow or another, we've got to get, the commissioners has got to start working with these businesses to offer some type of incentives, to offer some type of grants, some type of offers to get the amenities that you need in this side of the county, and the other side of the county. Have these town hall meetings with you folks up here in the northeastern side of the county that come up with ideas of what you think would be the best possible solution of having in business in this county that will allow this northern end of the county to grow. My opinion, it probably relies into the tourism side of it, in attracting certain tourism attractions as far as utilizing our river, utilizing the park, and taking advantage of the situation. If these people are coming up here, start building little rooms, little houses, little areas that will house these people, give them somewhere to stay. That would help. And once these people are here, then they start utilizing the stuff that folks have here. Once you have the traffic count of these folks here, then you can start, start putting bids out and stuff for folks to come and build these stores and these gas stations and these food areas. I heard on the news the other day that somewhere in Forsyth County, there was no food for someone that was within a mile, and it was a food desert. Well, what in the world would they call you guys up here? That's a huge desert, isn't it? So this is what I would try to work for. I would try to work for getting you the amenities that you need, the supplies you need, the gas, the food, the groceries that you go, you want to go, without having to ride 30, 40 minutes to go get it. That's difficult. And that's what I would need to, I would work with, like I said, with incentives and other areas to where we can attract these businesses to come here. Let's utilize your farming land you've got now with all your vegetables and everything you grow. Let's attract some stuff up. and everything you grow, let's attract some, uh, some, uh, stuff up here with that, and then start selling and then have people coming in. But if you got people coming in and utilizing, utilizing your area, then you're gonna grow some. But the main thing is the utilities that has to be provided, and that's the internet, that's water and sewer and gas, they have to come. And then the roads will get better.
It goes without saying that I strongly support and fund the access to broadband in all areas of the county, uh, until every citizen and every business has access to high-speed internet. This is a game changer for rural economic development. I would also listen closely to feedback from individual community representatives and groups to understand their needs, their ideas, and their desires, uh, as far as economic development. I would first focus on assisting existing businesses to remove government barriers and to support their expansion through grants and other expert business development support that they desire. I would also like to see the county commissioner set up an independent economic development corporation to oversee and manage economic development in the county. The corporation makeup would include both government and successful private sector business membership. It would examine the economic development corporation models used by other counties for this purpose, and develop a structure tailored to the unique aspects, aspects of Stokes County. The goal of this change would be to shift the economic development function from government only to an independent approach that is more stable and executed based on advice and assistance from people who are successful, highly qualified, and dedicating, dedicated to moving Stokes County's economic development forward.
First of all, can y'all hear me okay? Okay. Uh, I'm gonna sound like a broken record. First, fix our internet, water and sewer, this is a must. Our county and towns cannot depend on other counties for these services. King and Want Co. services are running way behind and must be fixed. This will be, this will take working with state and federal agents to get funds to fix these problems. This problem, along with the internet, is killing businesses from investing in Stokes County. We need to work with SciTech to offer classes for the trades that will be needed for companies and small businesses that we can set up here, that will feed the major businesses that's coming to the triad. I don't know whether y'all been keeping up with it, but the triad is having a major boom for the next couple of years. Boomjet, no, that, that, no pun intended, is coming to Greensboro. Toyota EV battery plant, we just bid building one on that, so they're gonna crank up pretty quick. One of my competitors, U-Pore Steel in Lexington, is building a rebar steel mill. And then, fast, I hope I'm saying that right, is the Vietnamese electric car plant is coming to Chatham County. Well, the fallout from all this is usually 60 to 100 miles, they don't do everything there, they feed from small little companies, and that's what we need to do and set up here. Uh, also, these companies are gonna create thousands of jobs. I don't know where they're coming from, but more than likely from out of state. So this will also increase tourism, agritourism, from people moving into triad to fill all these thousands of new jobs that's being created by the boom, and we must be ready. I would like to see a committee of businessmen and developers set up investment business parks for King, Pine Hall, and Want Co. areas, for new businesses coming but controlled development to keep Stokes County the way we love it. Every county that joins Stokes County, including Patrick, has a business park and they're being used. That's the first thing developers look for, for what's available, and, uh, and the sad thing, nothing changes in Stokes because nothing's getting done, we must change this. Thank you.
We'll finish this question off with Mr. Chandler.
Thank you. Economic development is probably one of the more important issues that is on the table for Stokes County. In 2013, a moving together vision plan began and concluded in 2015. Stokes County 2035 Vision Plan was comprehensive, that involved five phases. This plan is tailored towards the various areas of the county for economic development that is right for those communities. This is a living document that can be altered as times or conditions change. I agree with the 2035 Vision Plan that our economic development department should transition to a public, private, nonprofit economic development corporation. This type of partnership has a lot of benefits to include being more effective at raising private funds and grants, which allows the ability of the county to supplement public money. How many people in here, obviously don't say anything, but how many people in here have read this vision plan that was put out?
There were.
So we got a few? That's good, that's good. How many times have you been updated on a status plan of, uh, what we've done in the certain areas to be accomplished, or we tried to do? I don't see many hands, I see a zero. This is, it's a good plan, I, I'm, I can only relate back to my training, experience of being a leader in a very large police department, and, and I'm not the smartest guy around, but I look at best practices. And then when I find a best practice, you know what I do? I tailor it to my community, or back then, my police department, and I mean it, work for my community. That's what I'm trying, that's what I wanna do here in Stokes County. But you know what? And you can call me an outsider, cause I wasn't born here, I wasn't born here, but I think and feel like you, and probably more than some of you that don't wanna be in this county. But here's a surprising thing. Take a look at Yatkin County, which is smaller than us, take a look at Rockingham County, they're bigger than us, take a look at Surrey County, they're bigger than us, but you know what they got that we don't got, besides being very successful? And that's a private-public partnership, and guess what they do? They post, post updates and results every year, thank you.
All right, thank you all for that. We're gonna go back over to the sheriffs, talk about a different kind of business with you guys. Mr. Tuttle's gonna start this one. This question deals with data sharing. Uh, analysis of leading indicator crime data can be important in predicting more violent crimes. It can also be used as a tool to dispatch resources to guide programs and initiatives. Open and timely communication of the department's statistical data is important, not only to current businesses and residents, but can also be important to those seeking to relocate businesses or residences. Making crime statistics readily accessible keeps the community aware of the challenges your department and we all face. How would you use crime data for guiding policy and initiatives within our area, and how would you make such data available in a timely and convenient manner?
Crime data is a, a, a good tool, um, let me give you an example. The deputies are working this weekend, you got a new shift that's coming on tomorrow. Uh, all the break-ins, all the lars needs, uh, and that's the biggest issue that you have, I mean, you got a whole lot of other calls that, that happened, uh, in a day-to-day basis, but I think that maybe, what y'all are looking for is the breaking and enters and, and lars needs and where they're occurring at. But that is a good tool to use, and we currently have that in our Spilling CAD system, that we can map out, and if the, if we had a crime data analyst or something or other that could go out and share this information with the oncoming deputies tomorrow morning and say, listen, we had a rash of break-ins on Horseshoe Road, we had 15 on Horseshoe Road. That means you wanna send more people there to that area and everything, to, um, I was saying to me, blue lights deter crime. The more blue lights you got out there, the less crime you're more than likely gonna have. As far as sharing this data with you, um, in the month of March, last month, there was 814 calls dispatched by the sheriff's office, and 814 incident reports taken. Now, all of those weren't break-ins, I mean, 90 of them was, um, 911 hang-ups. I got this data from the IT department. They actually put a dot on a map and everything that could be provided to you, um, on a timely basis, monthly basis, but keep in mind that, I know all of these probably went on Google Earth at one point in time, you type in an address and everything, you can just keep going zooming down, zooming down, zooming down, zooming down, you see somebody standing in the yard. Uh, this, until we get some other program or something, this is not capable of doing that, it's a still photo and you can't zoom in on it, so you're gonna be looking at a little map on, on a phone or a computer and everything with 814 dots on it, not knowing what those dots are. But however, it is something that I think should be beneficial to you, the citizens, it should be beneficial to anybody that's wanting to relocate, uh, and move to Stokes County, their business, where they wanna relocate to, because the crime in each area, they can choose where they want to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so, let me tell you a little bit about what, how we currently use our data. Um, as, as he mentioned, we do have a CAD system, um, and we can pare those things down and see where certain crimes are occurring, uh, we can, uh, tailor that to, uh, location, days, certain times of the day. Um, and what we do in using that is, we push resources in an area, if we, say, you wanna call it a hotspot, or where we're having a whole lot of issues. And what we'll do is, we will, uh, sit down with our command staff, well, the patrol division, detectives division, um, and the administration, and we will sit and decide where we need to push resources, and the best way to do that is to go through data. Um, as far as sharing that data, um, you know, that's, that is something I think some agencies have done, we've not utilized that program for that, but that's absolutely something I'd be willing to look into. Um, what we do currently, uh, to share that data is, we, we push our, whether it be social media, um, we have, if there's a, a real emergency, we do have the reverse 911 system, uh, that we can alert you if there is a dire situation, um, in your area. And so that's some of the ways that we're currently using, uh, those data, to make sure that we're giving you the best, the taxpayer the best bang for your buck, um, in the utilization of our law enforcement.
All right, thank you. All right, how's everybody doing?
Good.
All right? Everybody, everybody still with us out there? Wake up, come on. All right, we have one more question for the commissioners and one more for the sheriff, so, uh, we're getting near the end, time to get kinda loose. This is a much shorter question, okay? And I, I hope that it's an easy question for you, it should be an easy question for you, but, uh, may or may not be. All right, so Mr. Oakley will start this one for the commissioners. As county commissioner, both appearance and actions in an ethical manner are critical in gaining and maintaining the public's trust and support. Many candidates pledge transparent government. Please state how you would uphold the standards of transparent government through management of information, public exchange of ideas, and management of established procedures. Mr. Oakley.
Uh, the transparency that government has today in Stokes County, it's fairly decent. You can view the board meetings online at the, uh, uh, at the comfort of your home. You can come to the meetings and listen to it, or you can call up the clerk and have them send it to you, on what the board has voted on or done, or talked about. Uh, they, they also have public comments for, allow people to come in and discuss their matters that they may have on, that may have any concerns, and on their mind of what they feel like needs to be talked about, that, that's taken care of, and that's done at the board meetings. And we always are in keeping of level ground and talking with people on the same issues with, with whatever issue that may arise. The, the transparency that happens with folks and we telling them what's, what, what needs to be done is very important to where everybody's on the same page of what's actually happening. The decisions that are made, the, the projects that we move forward with, that everybody knows and understands what's going on, and that, uh, that, that Stokes County's taxpayers is spent at the best possible way that it gets the biggest bang for their buck. That transparency is just not me telling you what is being done or what has been done in here, that transparency comes from you folks working with me and telling me what you think needs to be done. That, I will meet with you at any time, any place that I can to get some of these ideas out of you folks, to find out what's best be done for the county. And I, you can email me, you can call me, you can do whatever, if I am elected, and I will make sure that I will talk to you in a manner that it, uh, it, it answers your questions and it addresses the issues that you may have. But working together is the object of getting the biggest bang out of your buck, and that goes both ways. It's just not me sitting up yonder at, at the county if I'm elected, letting you see what I'm doing and how I'm doing it. It's working together, and, and I will go out and meet with you whenever you, uh, whenever you have these issues that you wanna talk to me about.
I consider ethical behavior and integrity the most important traits required of an elected official. For that reason, I support the North Carolina State Treasurer Darrell Folwell's initiative to place county commissioners under the state ethics laws. This would put some teeth into holding commissioners accountable for, for violations, which is difficult to do under the current provisions of the law. On the subject of transparency, I think it's best to ensure honest and efficient government, the best way to ensure, uh, honest and efficient government is to shine sunlight on everything government does. I try to do this by publishing a regular blog that focuses on Stokes County local government issues, and provides transparency on what the government is doing, whether good or bad. A process I would like to implement for increased transparency is a quarterly program review. County department heads would provide quarterly updates to the commissioners and the public on their activities using a standard set of charts and measures to include their budget execution and important issue, and their important issues and challenges. Another transparency issue I'd like to pursue is the video recording of all discussions held in closed session. These recordings would not be live streamed for obvious reasons, but would serve as an accurate record of the closed session. It might also be possible to release portions of this video to the public when the criteria was met for public release. Just as an example, our board had an issue on whether a certain notification was made during a closed session. There were different opinions on whether this notification occurred. The summary level minutes did not capture the details of the notification, but a video recording of the closed session discussion would have answered the question. A last measure I would continue to insist on is timely response to public records requests as required by North Carolina public records laws.
Transparency, transparency is a fundamental component of democratic government and addresses the rights of the citizens to know about the activities of their government. Too much secrecy in government often leads to a abuse of power and a lack of accountability. Some of these I'm gonna mention are already in place, but there's always room for improvement. Number one, open meetings and open record policies. Number two, invite the public to attend all commissioners' meeting, and I think we'd need to do a better job posting when all this happens by social media. Include time for citizens' comments, input during meetings without taking away their freedom of speech. Four, keep closed sessions to a minimum, and I know they're necessary. I would like to see town hall meetings at different locations during the year to get y'all's input. Maintain an update, informal, user-friendly website. And another thing that we stress with my company, uh, is that we have a 24-hour rule. Commissioner emails from citizens should be answered within two days. Government exists to serve the people who live and work in the community. Citizens have a right to know how government conducts public business, allocates tax dollars. Governments have a due Governments have a duty to share this information with the people they serve, which is really where the accountability starts.
This is another one of my major focuses, or one of the reasons why I ran for political office here, is what I call open and responsive government. And, I'm not just saying this because I all of a sudden filed to run for the Board of Commissioners. I started doing this, going to the Board of Commissioners when I saw things that I had questions about. And what I'm getting ready to tell you, it's not like I talk behind someone's back, or I wait until a gotcha moment. Every time I went in front of the Board of Commissioners with an item that I had a concern about, I always make sure, number one, I shake their hands, number two, I talk with them. All five of them, I talk with them. Policy decisions. But this is what upsets me, and like I've told them, even if you're doing the right thing, you got a right, you got a right in the head, you're right in the heart, messaging is very important in government, just like it is in private business. And I'll give you an example. I went up and talked about because I didn't like the contract that was offered to our current county manager. What I know of her, I mean, this isn't about her personally, she seems bright, and she's nice and professional to me, but the contract, and there what that she could be let go for, or what she gets raises for, the one basic thing in any organization, especially government, is performance evaluations. That wasn't even in the contract. That's very basic. But in the contract was if you're doing drugs on county property or drinking alcohol on county property, then you can be fired. You're setting her up for failure with stuff like that, when you don't issue a press release and you don't say the good things in public about her. If you're gonna hire and you support her, then you gotta set her up to be successful. And that's just one example. I could go five, six more examples, that's just off the top of my head. You have to be a leader if you're gonna be on the Board of Commissioners. We all have different priorities, and we may not all see eye to eye, but you know what? If you don't have a common mission... So every year, the board should sit down in a retreat setting, not in the Bahamas or anything, in the Board of Commissioner room on a Saturday, and you need to all agree on what are our priorities this year. If you don't do that, you're not going to accomplish anything, and if you do accomplish anything, the public's not gonna know it. Thank you.
So, as far as the transparency, when I first went on the board, I was one of the ones that pushed for the live streaming. This allowed the public to watch it online, they could go back and watch it at any time it was recorded. They could, the only thing I'd like to see different is it be separate, so when you've got the different sections we're talking about, you can go straight to those. That's one place I'd like to see it improved. I do wish we did have a recording session during all our closed sessions. I served as chair for nearly three years, and you can ask our county manager or our county attorney, anytime it was requested, something went into closed session, I questioned, is this really something that needs to be in closed session? When we got, said, yes, it's got something to do with personnel or property, you have to talk about it enclosed. If it was much beyond that, we did try to push it off. It didn't need to be there. And as you see on one of the meetings, as we was discussing the hospital, I was not able to be there at that meeting because I was out of town. It was not a scheduled meeting, because of everything going on, we had to have another meeting and gave short notice. You'll hear me on that TV saying, is this something that we really need to continue in closed session? The public is getting told different stories, lies are going around, people are getting upset. I don't blame them, I'd be the same. And as you see, our attorney said, yes, we had to keep it some closed, but in my opinion, it shouldn't have been.
All right, thank you, Commissioner candidates. All right, we have one more question for the sheriffs. And this deals with partnering. We recognize the Stokes County Sheriff's Department cannot combat all challenges within the county alone. We're interested in how you would work with communities and organizations across our county and our state to reduce crime, including the threat from rising trends of drug activity within Stokes County. How would you work with other agencies and organizations and with the general public to partner in these efforts?
Absolutely. That's a great question, and something that I think is really important for us to understand. We can't live in a bubble here. The criminal element, it doesn't pay any attention to the county line. Also, on the federal level, we've got a large group of people down south who don't pay much attention to the country line. And so we have to regularly work with all of our state, local, and federal partners. One thing that I have implemented is I have a detective who's actually assigned to a federal task force. And what that allows us to do is, we can, you know, we can tackle the drug problem here inside Stokes County, we can arrest the dealers, we can arrest people who are, and typically using drugs fuels these other crimes. So we can arrest them, but if we can stop it before it gets to Stokes County, that would be my goal. And one thing I love hearing, and I just heard this last week, our narcotics team was trying to order up an amount of methamphetamine, and the dealer wouldn't come up here, he said, I don't like coming to Stokes County, I don't like coming up there. I love hearing that, and I'm proud of that, but it's not just me, it's my guys. And as far as across the state, I urge you, call Sheriff Hyde here in Surry County, call Sheriff Kimbrough down in Forsyth County, call Sheriff Page over in Rockingham County, call Sheriff Smith right across the Virginia line here in Patrick County. We talk regularly. We make sure that we are keeping up with the trends of what's happening, what's coming, so that we can stop it before it gets here.
I agree with that. I'm sure there's most all of you in this room and everything know somebody, neighbor, someone down the road, just an acquaintance or anything that's been on drugs, uses drugs or something other. Everywhere I've been during my campaign or whatnot, I mean, that's what I hear, is drugs, 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 drugs. We called the Sheriff's Department, nothing's done about it. Now, you know, people tell you one thing and may not mean it, I'm just telling you that's what I'm hearing. As far as working with other agencies, when I was a detective, I was a detective, a criminal detective, narcotics slash narcotics detective for ten years and four months for my last ten years and four months tenure at the sheriff's office. I always got along with other agencies, I was always able to work with other agencies. I got a good rapport with those agencies, had a good rapport. I mean, the ones that's still there, I still know some people that was still at these agencies since I've been gone. But I would continue to do that, and state, local, federal, there's no room for a drug dealer, a drug user in my county. I'll bring the full force, ring and the sheriff's office down on them, and they can't find a hole big enough to hide them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That concludes the questions, so we're gonna give you each an opportunity now to say whatever you wanna say for a couple of minutes. If you didn't get the chance to talk about something you wanted to talk about, or you wanna clarify something that you said, or whatever, you got a couple of minutes to set the record straight, okay? Say whatever you want. We'll stay with the sheriffs and knock them out. So, Mr. Tuttle, we'll let you go first, close out.
I would just like to thank for all of you for participating to this night, listening to your candidate speak, and hope that you got enough information that you can make a good sound decision and make a satisfaction pleasing to you and pleasing to the county of who you want to elect, of the people that you've heard here tonight. I pray that y'all have safe, traveling safety back home, and I pray for all the candidates that are here tonight and everything, and I wish them well, and good luck to everybody that's here. And there's nothing that I didn't cover that I didn't wanna say. Thank you.
Yes, thank y'all for participating, for being here. You know, I tell people, if you don't vote, don't complain, right? And so you're a part of this process. There are millions of people, billions, I guess, of people around the world who don't get the opportunity to be involved in their electoral process. So thank y'all for showing up, and as soon as we get done here, if there's any, anybody has any questions for me, I'm more than happy to take the time to meet and greet with you. I'll end with this. I'm for three pretty simple things when it comes to my campaign and my priorities for the sheriff's office. Number one, safe schools. Number two, safe streets. Number three, safe neighborhoods. I think we've done that with our school resource program in the schools, we've done that through added equipment to keep our deputies and you safe. And number three is protecting our neighborhoods by making sure that a deputy's there when you call, but also just as important is you having the right to protect yourself and family. And the Second Amendment is absolutely something that I will never back down on, I will never interfere with. I appreciate you. Please go to joeylemons.com, that's my website. I'd appreciate your prayers, your support, and your vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. One thing I'd like to clarify before we let the candidates, the commissioner candidates give their final, is I said at the beginning that these are all Republicans. That's true. Okay? Everything I've said is true. I wanted to clarify that. If you're a registered Republican, obviously you can vote in the primary, May 17th, and you can make your choice. But independents can do that too. I didn't make that clear. If you're registered independent, you can choose to participate in the Republican primaries, so you have an opportunity as well to make the choice. So, I failed to make that clear. Okay, let's see, we're out to, Mr. Morris, I believe, gets to start the closure. So here you go.
Again, I would like to thank you folks for coming out, along with our communities in Northwest Stokes, for hosting this forum. You just really did a great job. It's critically important to have events like this so voters can hear directly from the candidates on where they stand before they are elected. Otherwise, voters have to wait and see how the candidates will vote, which can produce votes like the one that almost closed the Danbury Hospital, or one that limited freedom of speech for citizens choosing to speak during public comments at commissioner meetings. Given the examples I just stated, I feel the Stokes County government is at a real turning point with the upcoming primary elections. Candidates like myself, Brad Chandler, and Keith Wood will bring strong, mature, and experienced leadership to Stokes County. We will follow fair hiring practices for all employees to select the best qualified person for the job. We will study the issues...
Please, please, quiet, okay? Be respectful unless you want to affect, what we're here for.
We will study the issues and show up at meetings well-prepared to conduct county business for the people. We will require periodic reports from department heads so we can understand the issues they are dealing with and provide effective policies that support their efforts. The positive change for Stokes County will be immediately obvious. If the current commissioner candidates and Jake Oakley are elected, you can expect more of the same. Poor budgeting practices and croning hiring will continue, and God only knows what they will do with your rural medical services and our Critical Access Hospital. Just for the record, you can consider a vote for Jake Oakley, just like a second vote for Andy Nickelston. That's how they have operated for the past two years with their secret hospital deals and well-coordinated crony hiring practices. Again, I encourage you to vote for Brad Chandler, Keith Wood, and me. If you do so, I can assure you, we will take our election as county commissioners seriously, and we will do the very best job for you that we can possibly do. Thanks for your support, and I would appreciate your vote. Please follow my campaign on my campaign blog at rickmorriscommissioner.com. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for listening to me today. I know you got better things to do, and I appreciate you coming out. I will work, I will work hard for the people of Stokes County. I have no hidden agendas. I promise to attend all of the meetings in person. I say the county is in the business of serving the needs of the people, and the people need healthcare in their county, not forty miles away. We are one county, one people, and when we work together, we can accomplish great things. I won't need your vote, and thanks again for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with y'all this afternoon. We'll talk about quality of life. Quality of life, and what I consider quality of life is public safety, health, and education. That's the nucleus that drives economic development and drives the future of this county. If part of our county does not have healthcare, that's a problem. Businesses, when they wanna look to relocate here, they look at crime rates, they look at our school system, and they look at healthcare. What does it say with our school system, with our buildings that are falling down? And I've yet to see any kind of a plan of how we're gonna, how we're gonna attack that. Or guess what? What are we gonna do? Are we losing students, particularly in this side of the county? Is it because that no one's raising, making babies anymore in this side of the county? Or are we, how many students are we losing to private schools? Or charter schools? There is so much more needs to be done when we start trying to factor in what we're gonna do for Stokes County. And I wanna lead all of Stokes County, because if we're all successful, then we're all better. But we have to work together, and the only way we're gonna work together is let's look at statistics. If we have high crime somewhere, you admit it, and let's come up with a solution and try and solve it. If our school system is not doing well because of bad buildings that have not, that have been neglected for the past thirty, forty years, let's come up with a plan. Let's just all work together. That's all I'm asking. All work together. Thank you.
So, I was gonna try to finish this up a little bit on myself, but I guess there's some things I needed to cover. Every board member on that board is a vote for themselves. They think for themselves, and if anything like me, and I know some do, you pray about your decisions because God leads you. When you ask for it, that's what you receive. One thing I will not do is I'm not gonna do a blog to bash other commissioners when I didn't get my way. So, when everybody takes a vote, we stand on that vote, we stand by it. I'm not gonna put false information out there, just like when the superintendent was going on, saying that the revow was done, the revow had not been done. I seen a comment on Facebook, I said, basically I have no dog in this fight, but this is the reason why the contract hasn't been renewed because the revow hadn't been done. But in a blog, it said that it had. That's causing controversy, that's causing division in your county. We don't need that. Every citizen in this county needs to be working together as a team to move forward. And when you got stuff like that right there, going out bashing people that you're trying to work with, telling false lies, that's not doing anything. I've been here my whole life. I grew up with a lot of people, went to school with you, worked with you, know a lot, I see you in the stores. I'm gonna talk to you about anything you need to talk about. I'm not gonna cause controversy or division here. I'm a deacon at my church, and I take it proudly, I take and do God's will, the way He leads me. Is it always nice and lovely on the board and everybody get along? Of course not. We all have our concerns. But I can tell you, there's four of us on there, when that mallet hits the table, business is over with. You shake hands, you go home. We might not all agree on every decision, but I can tell you one thing we won't do is we ain't gonna bash each other and put you down. Because like I said, that does nothing for our county, that just causes more division. Thank you. Oh, sorry, sorry. You said the moderator says this is a time for the oops. I forgot to say earlier, I'm married to my wife eighteen years, she's lovely, she's my rock, and I just wanna say she's here... and I just want to say she's here to support too, so get one that can get in trouble before I left.
Mr. Blue, I want to thank you for your moderation of this forum. Folks of Northwestern Community of the county, Francis Cove, Lawsonville, Westfield, I do appreciate you allowing us to come up here and all the candidates come here and talk to you so you can have be better informed of who you need, you feel like you need to vote for. Guys, we got several issues in this county that needs to be taken addressed and taken care of. And one of them, main issue is making sure the internet is provided to everyone in the county. That is, that hopefully is being done now through River Street with the current contract that's being signed and I would love to be a part of making sure this is accomplished. Drug opioid is a problem in this county and we got to address it to where and work with the sheriff and making sure he's got the the people to make the do what he needs to do, what he just recently said concerning making sure that the drugs don't even come into this county. Guys, we got to work together. We got to, we've got to make sure that we put Stokes County first, put the citizens of Stokes County first, making sure we've got every opportunity that we can get, every T crossed and every I dotted, and making sure that Stokes County gets every funding source that is out there that comes in. With this hospital, it's been mentioned that there's 10 million coming in on end. Also mentioned that someone is going to pay the bills if we have to borrow $40 million to go along with that with the hospitals being built. Now, how many people pays your bills when you go borrow money? So watch how the have truths and things that comes out in promising you what will happen. And and when we move forward with things, we work together and we work together in a manner that everybody is a part of accomplishing the ultimate goal. Folks, I thank you so much for allowing me to be here and I say God bless each and every one of you. I promise to serve the Stokes County citizens with conservative views, integrity, and honesty, and using common sense approach based on the much prayer through our heavenly Father. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone of you for participating. We had three candidates, as I mentioned, that did not participate for whatever reason, I don't know, they didn't show up. These guys showed up. It's not easy to sit up here. It's not easy to look at you guys for two hours. At least I didn't have to do that, see, I would look at this way. We've tried to keep enough time where you can you can talk with the candidates a little bit, they can mingle around and don't forget about Sylvia's good stuff back there that you need to eat. So hopefully you've got a little bit better picture. I know the room's kind of big back there, just to make sure everybody knows Andy Nickelston, Brad Chandler, in case you can't see the name tags and forgot, Jake Oakley, Rick Morris, Keith Wood, that's your Board of Commissioner candidates, along with the three that did not show, Wayne Barney Castle, Harold Collins, and Mike Falk. And then the two sheriffs, we got Jason Tuttle here and current sheriff Joey Lemmons. Thank you again, candidates, I appreciate it. I know it's it's difficult for you guys to do that, they're all pretty bashful, don't like to get up in front of people. Thank you all for coming mainly.